I'd like to call it a order this meeting of the Mercer County Board of Education. Mr. Boo, roll call please.
Good evening everyone, District 1, Amber Franceski, she's at tonight. District 2, Amy Hart.
Here.
District 3, Billy Montgomery.
Here.
District 4, Cliff Pruitt.
Here.
District 5, Randy Phillips.
Here.
Next up will be our pledge of allegiance and welcome here at MCES.
...to the quiet of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now have a couple of students share their favorite memories from MCES.
My name is Brantua, I'm eight years old. My favorite memory from MCES is the Legends baseball game. It was so much fun. I played baseball so it was a fun trip. I had a lot of fun at MCES, but I have to go to MCES.
May I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make motion.
Mr. Pruitt makes a motion, can I have a second?
I'll say it.
Mr. Montgomery, second, all in favor? Now time for our recognitions, and before we get started, I just want to say thank you to everybody here at MCES for having us tonight. Fantastic turnout, and we greatly appreciate the hospitality, and I think it's wonderful we can go to each one of our schools throughout the year and have these board meetings and get a chance for a lot of our kids to be recognized on their home turf, if you will. So I think this is a wonderful thing.
Mr. Boo, you have the recognitions. Good evening. We've been recognizing kids across the district for the last couple of weeks, especially the last couple of weeks of school, and we've got some really special ones that we'd like to recognize tonight. First up, we always start with our monthly Superior Titan Award winners. And we call those the Dairy Queen Superior Titan Award winners because as part of winning this award, you get a free large Blizzard of your choice from Dairy Queen. I usually go to the school day, the next day, and present it in front of their peers, their little coupon for the Blizzard, but since we're out of school, I will put that in the mail tomorrow or the next day. So again, this is the Superior Titan Award winner for last month. Mr. Phillips will be handing you out your certificate here. Right? A student from each school will be recognized each month by the board for their efforts in classroom leadership, skills, and attitude. They must follow these guidelines to be chosen for this award, perfect attendance during this month, completed all their homework assignments and tests, they have to have passing grades on everything, no discipline issues whatsoever, they have to demonstrate great leadership skills, and they have to exhibit a winning attitude and spirit toward learning and peers. So it's some strict criteria, and our Mercer County Elementary School Superior Titan Award winner is Briella Davis. Next up, our Superior Titan Award winner for Mercer County Intermediate School is Nora Reid. Our Superior Titan Award winner for King Middle School is Jude Cadwell. And our Superior Titan Award winner for Mercer County Senior High School is Delaney Moore. Let's give all four of those great. And I'll mail out your coupon for your free large Blizzard for the night of school. We've got some other student recognitions tonight, and Mr. McAllister, Mr. Anderson, we've had a month-long, and Mr. McAllister will probably speak on this, but we've had a month-long art showcase for Mercer County. We really feel like it's important to show off our arts students. And we did the high school and middle school last month, we recognized them, and this month, of course, it's elementary and intermediate. So, Mr. McAllister, I'll turn it over to you.
Oh, thank you very much. Yeah, at this time, we would like to wrap up Mercer County's very first art showcase month, recognizing some of our students for high achievement in various forms of fine arts. As we said last month, before we last month at Mercer County, we want to be a community that supports its strides in race and academics, art, and interdisciplinary. And furthermore, we want to be a community that celebrates those achievements when they happen, and that is what the art showcase has been about for this last month. We've had activities all over our campuses for the last month, we saw, you know, we've seen many great performances, and last month, we got to recognize middle school and high school kids, and it was great to see all of them turn out. We're super excited too tonight to recognize our kids from the elementary. So tonight, Superintendent Jason Booer and the Mercer County Board of Education will recognize students from the elementary and the intermediate school. Each of them will receive a certificate from the board and a yard sign to let people know of the students' great efforts. So we appreciate all your efforts, and we just love an opportunity to recognize you. So when I call your name, you'll come up front, and the yard signs, he has one there, but the yard sign is actually back here, so make sure that you get those, we just want you to be able to hold them up there as you come back to your seat, so make sure that you get those when you leave.
And you'll get a, I mean, you'll get a yard sign plus the little metal thing, be careful with the aluminum metal thing that stinks, the snake, I guess, yeah.
Okay, and we'll start off from MCES, Scarlett Armstrong. Aubrey Ward. Kinsley Goode. Cora Gentry. Andrew Bott. All right, from MCES, Isabel Frank. Isabel Taylor.
He's like, if you're here, come on up.
All right, Tim Lee Devine. Annalyn Reed. Lillian Proctor. Jaylee Daniel. Dalala Young. Lucy Blevins. Jaylee Freeman. Chloe Peebler. Abayah Woods. Mackenzie Harden. And Lucy Blevins. All right, again, thanks, thank everybody for the, this is our very first one, for our support and putting us all together, and so here, congratulations, very proud of you, and good luck to you next year.
Yeah, I want to thank all the staff that's in the arts, performing arts, and all the jobs that they did the last, like I said, three or four weeks, closed the school with all the productions and performances and displays, and it's just been really, really great for our arts departments throughout all of Mercer County schools. Lastly, for staff recognitions, we had three teachers that have been recognized by Campbellsville University as their excellence in teaching awards, for Teacher of the Year awards, and those three are Andrew Ashford. Keep Jay on his toes. And this teacher's retiring, and she said, I believe she's leaving this afternoon after our closing day, so she won't be here tonight, Ms. Vicky Walls. And Nikki Keller. That's all the recognitions.
Okay, at this time, usually what we will do is if there's any of the kids that would like to get a group picture or anything, you can certainly do that, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the board meeting, but we understand if you've got things to go and places to be, please do so. We'll take about a two to three minute recess right now before we continue on, so thank you all very much.
Okay, we got one more student?
Yeah, we have one more student from our art showcase, from the elementary, Cora Gentry.
You'll take a minute or two, don't forget your yard sign and your little stake that goes around as well on the way out, get you one of them. Have a great summer, everybody.
Absolutely.
Does look good.
They are good. I have that exact same one, actually.
I don't know if there'll be one on the way out, but I'll grab one.
Come get you one right now.
No, can't run my hot dogs.
Can't ruin them. You have chili nuts now?
One to have a chili.
Yeah, I love chili. I'm having tacos.
So we had small green one too tonight.
Last night, she had real good, and we had she come in from last night, and she had, she had carry on the chicken and scare.
Tuesday at our house. We've been doing it for several years.
Yeah, I know, everything's good.
I had my parking place.
Okay, we will go ahead and continue on with our board meeting. We have no one signed up for public participation, so now we'll move on to our reports section, and we'll have our principals report, and Ms. Johnson will be here reporting for the MCES, so.
So I am only going to speak for a little bit, and I just wrapped up today, it was my fourth year of being the principal of MCES, and it's been a great year. We do have some of our council members here tonight, so Ms. Nikki Keller is on our council, Mr. Corey Burns is on our council, Ms. Amy Haynes is on our council, hopefully our parent reps are here, I did want to recognize them. Ms. Bray is going to come and do an overview of just our spring, and then Ms. Keller will come with our students. So I'm Ms. Bray, and I work as the Family Resource Center coordinator here at the elementary. And Ms. Johnson, I just wanted to highlight a few of our spring activities that we've done, and collaborating in the community as well as with our other schools. So I'm giving you all a little presentation, we'll start with February. So at the elementary, we highlight kindness as our theme for the year, and we've continued that for a couple of years, and we'll continue next year, but we have a kindness week in February, and this year, we collected food for our community backpack program for our children. So we collected 2,890 food items, I'm very proud and pleased with our students, and then also, the Family Resource Center bought kindness books, and Ms. Green and I both went into all the classrooms and read to the children and talked about kindness and ways we could be kind. In March, we collaborated with our high school and our Beta Club, our gifted and talented and the gear up folks, and at a Dr. Seuss book walk. Highlight of our Read Across America Week, the children absolutely loved going to the high school, and the high school students were phenomenal. They greeted us with open arms, the high school students performed their favorite book, and we had some activities, so that was a great, that was a great program, and then it took a lot of work to get all of our K through 2 students over to the high school, so I had to commend our transportation department, they were absolutely flawless in getting us back and forth and taking our grade levels throughout the day, so they were wonderful. In April, we have Heart of Kentucky Kids, it's an early childhood regional collaborative, and we are partners with Boyle County, and we have our own Mercer community, so we collaborated with our Mercer County Community Folks in Bergen, and we held an early childhood event called Less Learned, Mercer and Bergen, and it's for children birth to five years old, and we really wanted to focus on kindergarten readiness, and we've had free take-home kits and free books for all the children that attended, as well as other community partners, and had that at the library, we had over 40 families come in that day, I think we counted 118 actual attendance, that's recording in just two hours at the library on a Saturday morning. So it was a great day, we signed the kids up for the Golden Heart and Magination Library, and just had a really great time, and we're actually going to have another one of those in June, so we're looking forward to that. And then in May, we have our career fair, so we collaborated with eight different careers, and our children just travel from station to station, we had about 10 minutes per station, and we did it in about an hour and a half time per grade level, and they got to see of course the firefighters and the policemen, and our parents for police department brought their drone, and the kids were all about the drone. So we had Sid Duncan, he was our entrepreneur and radio host, our dental hygienist, Ms. Baker was there and talked all about dental hygiene and what she does as a hygienist, meat tractor sales, we had a couple of those from there come, and we talked to the kids about agriculture, we had a wildlife officer from the Fish and Wildlife Department, our local Department of Transportation came with a snowplow, and the kids were able to look at that, go through it, and then we had our Air Flight Paramedic, one of our students, his dad is an Air Flight Paramedic, so he did a video of the actual helicopter and took them all through it, and then came that day and explained all that, so they were excited to see that, and we hope to get the helicopter back here soon. And then just to wrap up, next week, we're going to have a summer kickoff camp, and we have 40 children enrolled, and they're going to travel through stations in the morning, a literacy arc station, a science math station, and Sherri Lewis is going to come and do a fitness session, do dance fit kits, as well as some cardio gramming, and then Bobby White, from Exention, is going to do a food nutrition, and she's got some good things planned, and on Friday, we'll wrap that up with a puppet show, magic show, and an offer visit with our students, and we hope to send lots of material home with them, so they can continue their summer morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, Henry Ashford is going to come and lead us in our Titan books that we do every morning at MCES.
I am respectful, I am responsible, I am ready, and I am safe.
At MCES, we have learned a lot about being kindness, we have participated in many kindness projects throughout the year. My name would like to share a poem with you about kindness, it was written by H.W.
My words are the words, my words are the roots, my thoughts are the flowers, my deeds are the fruits. Take care of your garden, and keep out the weeds, though if it's a long time, I'm gonna let it take my leaves.
We have created a copy of this poem as keepsake of Mr. Booer, and each word memory, memory as the reminder to always be kind and take care of your garden.
Thank you, girl. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good job.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, young man.
If you all see this, she can project well. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we will share our favorite memories from second grade. My name is Avery, I am eight years old, my favorite memory from MCES is meeting my teachers. My kindergarten teacher was Miss Mays, my first grade teacher was Miss Little, and my second grade teacher was Miss Keller. All of these teachers made me feel happy.
I am eight years old, was walking, taking a trip to watch the legends game, I had a great time that day.
My name is Alice, my favorite memory from MCES is when we went to play at the Magic Land, I also like watching football, I'm sorry trying to get those, I'm very late, you're making me tired.
My name is Harper, I am eight years old, my favorite memory from MCES is when I met my second grade teacher. My second grade teacher was Miss Keller. When I met her, I felt happy because I couldn't wait.
My name is Henry, I am eight years old, my favorite memory from MCES is the legend to the legend game. We had lunch there, we had popcorn there too, I was very happy on that day.
My name, my name is Cory, I am eight years old, my favorite memory from MCES is the legend to the legend game. When a player hit the ball on the day one, it made me feel happy about football.
Our leaders at MCES have served to win, better well wishes to more teachers and classmates we send. Second grade is now a thing of the past, but we have always asked.
Thank you all, and I had a few students that came in, I know Aubrey here, the letter that I sent out said six o'clock on it, so that's why they were coming in. The letter that I sent out said six o'clock on it. So that's why they were coming in.
We have some seats up front. If anybody would like to come up here and, this will come on, Will.
Close to the door. We've got district to go in.
Hey, I hear you. But I do want to thank Ms. Johnson for having us. I appreciate that presentation and I think that's wonderful. Those kids are going on to the next stage and they're excited. They obviously love Lexington Legends baseball. So I kind of got that feeling. That's something they'll always remember. Thank you very much for that presentation. And I'll tell you, I've already think of a place. I'm going to stick this at work. So that's awesome. Okay, up next will be Ms. Minor and our finance report.
Sorry, I don't have a poem or anything to chat. I'll just say. Okay, our ending general fund cash balance was 10.14 million as opposed to 7.85 million the prior year. Our general fund revenue including the beginning balance was 25 million as opposed to 24.1. And the receipts in the year were 18.64 million as opposed to 18.51 million. Our expenses were 15.7 million. They only was 16.5 million the year before. And our ending balance at that point in time was 9.3 million as opposed to 7.6 million. It is important to note, and we'll talk about this a little bit more in the budget, that some of these areas look either increased or decreased a lot because of federal funds that we received and we were, you know, able to pay for some of these other federal funds in the last few years or, you know, maybe the prior year and then not the next year and that kind of thing. So just be mindful of that. That some of the numbers look, oh, that's wonderful. I mean, it is. It's great. But we're going to start seeing that evening out with lesser federal funds than before. Sorry, one of my little ones was one of the ones upstairs saying a poem. So I have to fill out those. Okay, so the district has received 92.9% of the revenue budgeted for the year at 83.3% through the fiscal year. And then on the expense side, we've expended 168.3% of the expenses that were budgeted for the year. And in the month of April, we had expenses of 1.4 million. Are there any questions?
Good report. Good. Thank you very much. Personnel report, which is just for your review. And I'm sure everybody's looked at that already. So we will move on to our CMTA report and Jason Vols, welcome.
Thank you all for having me. This is a report that we give annually based on a project that we did back in 2019. So 2019, we renovated KMS HVAC system, partial renovation of MCIS, and then we did LED lighting across the whole district. So annually we come back and make sure that the systems are performing like they were. And good news is that there's a full report that Ms. Minor has. We've seen as well. But $250,000 was the amount of funding that we were guaranteeing that you would be savings on the utility side. And you save $298,000. So that's an excess of $47,000. Overall, from our baseline period that would have been 2018, your electricity consumption is down 50% and your gas consumption is down 52%. So all good news.
Absolutely.
Any questions? You need the presentation, I think.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Always good to get good news. Next, our food service yearly update. Mr. Minor.
I'll make it quick, I promise.
You're good. He just wants to get to the cookie plate over there.
It's been a while since I've been up here in front of people. Just a few things. I'm going to start back with summer feeding of last year. Mercer County was one of the highest growing ones in central Kentucky. We ended up serving around 166,000 meals last summer feeding with the month of June and July. We were awarded a grant through Feeding Kentucky, No Get Hungry that we're gearing to get this year. It's to help offset some of the costs that come along with summer feeding. As you all know, you all voted on. 22 out of the 31 of my employees have signed up to do summer feeding this year because we paid them well to do that. But we're also doing a great thing for the community around here. We go into this summer, in the summer feeding, use the same energy as we did last year. We're going to keep that up, keep that hub, keep the involvement within the community. I think it's played big roles within that food insecurity in the summer months when parents go from sometimes only having to feed their kid once a day to all of a sudden you're feeding it twice or three times a day. That's a huge financial burden on them, especially with food costs and things like that. All right, on to this school year. I just pulled numbers. We served 533,000 meals within the nine and a half, 10 months that we're in school. During that, Food Service Department, we went through an administrative review that happens every five years. That goes from top to bottom within the Food Service Department. We were set through the thing of, we had no findings at the school level. We had two small little technical findings at the district level. Had those cleared up and we got our closure letter, I don't know, it was about a week ago, I think we got it in there. That we're standing in great standings, you know, like I said, that's every five years. That goes, a lot of things that you can do within five years' time in there. And I think this is the first review that Mr. Brewer set through. So we learned a lot in there. I'm also in a procurement review right now. That's all of my financials for the past five years. It closes probably with no findings in it. So that's help from Ms. Minor on the finance side and you all keep me in line with paying myself right and things like that. Just a few things, upgrades coming into, we were supposed to have it done right after spring break. We have some outdoor seating areas going on at Keene Middle School and at the intermediate school. You all know the weather just did not play right. We didn't have a stretch of three or four days that did not rain or had the ground drought. So they're starting tomorrow at the middle school. We want to dig out the new concrete cabinets out in front of the school. Picnic tables are already here. We've been using those. I think it's a great thing to get the kids out there in that time. So I think out there we can fit around 68 kids. So three classes are on that. Same thing with the intermediate school. It's in the back. It's already fenced in. They're going to pour concrete up there. We're going to put a few raised garden beds out there so the kids can get, you know, more into the growing vegetables and fruit. We also have the high school remodel. It's going to start the second week of July. It should be done within about four to five days of it starting. It's going to be a complete, like, they're going to be painting and everything. They're going to get us bored this time around. Few big things with food service this year. We worked with building level administrators at the intermediate school and at elementary school to bring more parent involvement in there. So we had holiday meals at elementary or at the intermediate school. We had end of the year cookouts. I think that's an amazing thing to get those parents into the schools to see the artwork, to see the teachers, the teachers interacting with them. It went flawless. I can't thank the administration within the schools enough for helping us out on that. I can't wait to see what next year brings with bringing that in here. Financially, we're showing an increase in our end of year carryover year after year. That's something I'm very proud of. When I took over five and a half years ago, we barely had contingency and we're now setting with a very healthy budget to be able to self contain us and not have to get into general fund at all. Retention rate within food service, I'm losing three staff members. Two of them are retiring after multiple years of being here. And one of them is just getting into another job. So I'm very proud of that. That's the culture that we've built in there. That's our staff. Can't thank them enough for that. And then the big thing that we did this year was farmland school. I got a grant last year through the United States Department of Agriculture to do more farmland school work. So I took it upon myself a few years ago to start it COVID hit and kind of just bottom that out. Past two years, I've worked tirelessly. My wife can attest to that. Getting up on Saturday mornings and getting farmers markets to make sure these kids are getting the best quality fruit, vegetables that they can get. This year, I partnered with Goose Creek Family Farms. So all of the children's beef products in Mercer's room, it's all local within just a few miles from my office, all right here from Mercer County. 75% of our fruit and vegetables, depending on the time of the year, is all within local. I'd say that's 40 miles because we can't get it all right here. So it's all being grown in the area where these kids, it's some of their parents, it's some of their grandparents that are doing it. I am partnering up with Shaker Town next year to start to get produce from them as well to keep that as local. We're going to start using that as kind of a teaching aid here at the elementary levels and the intermediate school. Because you can still go ask kids where tomatoes come from and they say Walmart. And so it's kind of teaching them that. And then having a few chefs come in here to teach them how to, how to use tomatoes, you know, without getting deep into, you know, or strawberries or things like that. That's something that I'm proud of bringing, kind of growing that program within Mercer County. I've been asked by the Kentucky Department of Education to help train some more districts. So there's three dates within the next two months. I'm going to be going with them. I think that's great for Mercer County to get our name out there like that. Like I said, I ran with it. I enjoy doing it. I enjoy getting with the farmers. I enjoy learning how plants are, you know, grown myself because I'm a farmer. We can't keep grass alive in our house some years. So with all that being said, we're still got our hydroponics going on at the intermediate school. I think they harvest right up in the school. So we've had the kids about beside the fruit trees out there, which ones are still a little harsh on them. Should be getting fruit off of them next year. Other than that, it's been a great year. I think we've done some really successful things. I'm excited where next year is going to go. And I have brochures. We have to do them every year. So this is the 22, 23 because that was last year. I will have the 23, 24 out. Probably a month or so, we'll probably leave these a few. And it kind of just goes over all of our programs that we run. It has financial totals in there. It has middle totals. It also has fiscal activity report, which is our level wellness policy. It has all of the scores between the schools on that, where we need to work and where we're at our level of. Yeah, I would like to feel. Thank you all.
Chris, thank you very much. Good report. Appreciate all the hard work. You and your staff, you are so dedicated to this district and these kids, man. It's wonderful.